Town meeting members, please be seated. Tell us tonight, Precinct 1, Joyce Rodenhizer, Precinct 9, Ed Bozell. Tell us, please come forward to be sworn to your duties.
.................................
Town meeting members, please raise your right hands and the tellers will take the count.
Fourteen.
Fourteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen? Thirty-one, thirty-two with the moderator, we have a quorum. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
.....................................................................
Okay, before... Before the roll call by our town clerk, this is kind of an important night. We have a ballgame going on.
...............
What? This is usually where I announce, "Please shut off the cellphones and the iPads." Kind of selfish on this one. Mr. Donato.
...............
You're right. Hold on one second, please. There's a little bit of latitude here. It's the ninth inning from what I understand. Joanne Rappert, our town clerk, will now call the roll after this. We will stand for a moment of silence for Peter Bogdan.
................................................................................................ Please call the roll.
Allen.
...
.........................................................................................................
He's absent.
Donato.
...
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Okay, Madam Clerk, I have heard from Ms. Devlin, Ms. Malone, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Dougherty, Ms. Lucy, Mr. Donabato, Mr. Christopher, and Mr. Hawks. So obviously, tonight's meeting being a Tuesday after following the holiday was somewhat unexpected and people had made plans. So thank you all for who were able to make this meeting. The... Before we go on, I would like us to stand for a moment of silence from Peter Bogdan and Herb Upton. Hold on, hold on a second. The... Just a couple of memories with Peter Bogdan. I think most of us here have known Peter during our entire time of involvement here in Saugus. He was the first moderator that I remember sitting with on town meeting and at the middle school. He was just involved in so many things. Veterans, obviously, the... And what do you call it, Lobsmann's Landing down there over the years? Pete was just... He was always here. He always had... He always articulated his opinions and he's one of those people who would speak out when he thought that he should speak out and if he's going to be missed. Herb Upton, again, going back some. I know he was certainly involved in a lot of... I don't recall him being on town meeting with us or with me, but I do recall him being on a number of town committees, certainly involved in a number of theatrical productions here in Saugus. He just loved the arts. And again, somebody that in the community, when you lose a person like that, you just kind of lose a little piece of the community itself. So if you'll all join in for a moment of silence, please do. Now, tonight, tonight's business is basically one article. The moratorium, temporary moratorium for medical marijuana treatment center, centers. And we'll get to that in a moment. First article, though, is reports of committees. Are there any committees that wish to be heard from, reported? Mr. Menugian.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, the sidewalk committee has been busy over the summer, quite busy. And again, I want to thank the members of the sidewalk committee for their excellent attendance and their hard work in surveying and making lists of panels that are damaged and so forth. Here's what we've done since I last reported at the annual. The eighteen percent allotment is about one hundred and fifteen, one hundred and twenty thousand, in that range. And where most of the ramps have been completed in town, the great majority in fact, the sidewalk committee has decided to identify three major thoroughfares that are in need of new sidewalks. And they were Lincoln Avenue, Main Street, and Central Street. The sidewalk committee voted to begin Lincoln Avenue between Endicott Street and Bristow Street with this first allotment of funds. And the reason for that is several... I'll give you the reasoning. It's Lincoln Avenue is being done, as you know, on both ends. And the granite curb and concrete panel motif is what we're going to use on Lincoln Avenue. We figured it'll take about two to three years to finish Lincoln Avenue. And then after that, there's a grant for Central Street, that area, Safe Schools Grant that'll be kicking in in 2015. And we'll be deciding between that and Main Street as which one would be done next. The town manager did attend one of our meetings and when the concern came up from some members as, geez, we've got some real emergency panels now that need to be done, his suggestion was that we identify the worst of the worst and go out for a proposal on that, which we did. And, you know, we identified a hundred panels, right? Not ninety-nine, not a hundred-one. It came out to a hundred panels on Main Street that are significantly deteriorated. And we based a bid on that and the bids were just opened by Michelle Wendell. And again, as construction won that bid, it was the low bidder, but it's going to be on a per-panel amount. So the next step is we have to find out how many dollars we have available from FY14 appropriation. There's a sidewalk line item. And we're going to identify that number and then back into the worst of the worst panels on Essex Street, Winter Street, Main Street, and so forth. So we're going in the direction of dealing with the worst panels. A lot of them, you'll see orange paint. Jimmy Ward's been helpful and we walked Main Street together and Joyce did Main Street and Al did Essex Street with Jeannie. And everyone's been busy. Steve, I know you were in Winter and so forth. So we are going to pick the worst of the worst with the dollar amount that we have available, which we don't know yet. We know what the bid is on the per-unit and we're just going to back in that way. So it's... That's the challenge there, but we are going into Lincoln Avenue and that's what you'll see over the spring. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But again, I want to thank this committee. They're outstanding, their diligence, their effort, and their attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Menugian. Questions to Mr. Menugian? Further reports of other committees? Saying none. All right. With regard to the warrant itself, I have a letter here from Town Council John Vasapoli, addressed to the town clerk there, Ms. Rappert. In accordance with Section 28 of the Town Charter of Town Saugus, I have reviewed the warrant of the special town meeting scheduled to be held on October 15th, 2013, consisting of two articles, in my opinion, that said warrant and the two articles contained therein are legal with respect to form and that the town meeting is within its authority to act on said articles in said warrant as written. And then we will now go to Article 2. And before we get into the details of Article 2, the planning board did hold a public hearing Thursday, October 10th, at 2013 at the Town Hall Annex on this particular, this moratorium article. All five members voted to recommend this moratorium article be voted by town meeting. The article itself, Mr. Palczynski moves Article 2 as a courtesy to the manager. Is there a second?
Second.
Article 2, the purpose is the Massachusetts Medical Marijuana Initiative, also known as Ballot Question 3, was approved by the voters of the town at the Massachusetts State Election November 6, 2012. The law regulates the cultivation, distribution, possession, and use of marijuana for medical purposes. The law is effective on January 1st, 2013, and the State Department of Public Health issued final regulations regarding the implementation of the law on May 24th, 2013. Just without going through the whole entire article, the town intends to adopt a temporary moratorium of a finite duration on the use of land and structures in the town for medical marijuana treatment centers to allow the town sufficient time to engage in a careful study and planning process to address the potential impact, both primary and secondary of said structures and uses in the town and to enact bylaw and a manner consistent with a sound land use and planning goals and objectives. The moratorium should be voted. And by the way, this is a two-thirds vote because this is a bylaw, zoning bylaw adoption. The moratorium shall be in effect through and including September 30th, 2014, or until such time as zoning bylaws are adopted that address medical marijuana treatment centers and associated activities, whichever shall be sooner. Mr. Manager, did you care to make some comments on the article?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen. First, I want to thank everyone for assembling this evening regarding the temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers. As you're probably aware, as followed, this is something that became law and has been going through an adoption and approval process as far as procedures at the state level. This is something that probably about a year ago, sometime last year, I had received some information from surrounding communities, had sent this off to the planning board as well as the Board of Health with trying to look at this and come up with how this would affect the town and the impact. Since then, we have, as you know, and you supported the Robert Luongo, which is Economic Development Coordinator, and I want to recognize his efforts and diligence in putting the moratorium together and also spending time, you know, obviously with the selectmen, their concerns, as well as when we looked at this process and the impact this would have from the community and from others. You know, I think that there's some serious concerns about the location or where these would... Centers would be located in the community with being sensitive that this is the law and that there are people that are medically in need or would require this to be, I guess they don't call it prescribed, but the access and availability of that. But I think there's a concern from everybody that we've dealt with and discussed, particularly with the selectmen, where these centers would be located. We spent quite a bit of time in meetings in the past months with the police, you know, Board of Health, the fire department, as well as many other town boards, discussing what type of bylaw we would put together, what type of zoning overlay. And, you know, as you can imagine, you have a zoning issue, then you have Board of Health regulations that need to be implemented, as well as possibly some police regulations and enforcement. So it's pretty complex and I think that what we decided and what we thought and what we are supporting and proposed here is a moratorium so that we can spend more time in seeing how these regulations pan out, so that we can develop a zoning overlay and bylaw, get additional information to be able to implement, to have the benefits that are needed, but also to be sensitive to the impact this will have on the community and where they're located. So for those reasons, I'm asking you to support a moratorium so that we can spend the time as a town to, I would say, get this right. And at this time, Robert Luongo has got a presentation. He's put quite a bit of work into this and he's just been a phenomenal asset that with your support and the selectmen's support of bringing on Economic Development Coordinator, not only dealing with the zoning issues and having such a strong planning background, but also applying for different grants. We're looking at a CIC grant, Challenge Grant. We're looking at many different grants now with somebody that has the knowledge and the background to be able to put things together and help us move in a direction that we set as priorities and look at opportunities for the town. So thank you.
Mr. Luongo, you have a presentation?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's a pleasure to be before a town meeting. It's my first town meeting, so go easy on me. What I want to do is just give a quick overview of the medical marijuana bylaws, just a brief history of it, and then bring us up to why we feel we need the moratorium for this period of time. And then I'll be here to answer any questions that you have. So basically, this is the definition of a medical marijuana treatment facility. It's also known as a registered marijuana dispensary. And that's under the regulations, it's known as the medical marijuana dispensary. And this is the definition that we have to go by when we define the medical marijuana facility. And I think you all have a copy of it and I'm not going to read it to you. I think you can read it. But it includes... It can include either one or all of those activities, so it doesn't have to include all of them. It can just be the facility for dispensing it. You don't have to grow it here, so you can... The applicant can pick what they want to do. So basically, in November of 2012, Saugus, along with every other community in Massachusetts except for Lawrence and the town of Mendon, voted to accept medical marijuana facilities. And that law was passed and then it was followed by regulations that were adopted by the Mass Department of Public Health in May of 2013, which really set up the meat of the law and how one should proceed to apply for a license and what are the obligations of the applicant, both internally, how they structure their organization, and it also gives guidance as well as to how they have to cite their facility as well. So there must be at least thirty-five of these facilities in the state, five per county, and there needs to be at least one of these facilities in each county in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So under these regulations, there's only thirty-five facilities in the state. However, if the Public Health Department feels that there's a demand for more facilities, they can increase that number. But right now, the applications are just for thirty-five facilities. And I should just note that in their Phase 1 application, there were eighteen applicants that indicated they were interested in Essex County, which obviously this is where Saugus is located, in Essex County. So we know there are eighteen applicants out there that are in their Phase 2 now, looking at Essex County. The Act also provides for hardship. So if a patient has a physical incapacity to access a facility, they can actually grow it in their own home. They can grow up to a sixty-day supply or ten ounces. There's really not too much anyone can do about that. We can't regulate that by zoning, by land use issues, but we might be able to regulate that with public health regulations from the Health Board. So that's one of the reasons why we need to look at that. So that is something that will happen regardless of zoning. So the regulations, as I said, were approved in May. They went into effect May 28th. There's two phases to the application process. This is for people applying to get licenses to either distribute and grow medical marijuana. Again, one hundred and eighty-one applications were received. The Phase 2, they qualified one hundred and fifty-eight of those applications. And as I said, eighteen applicants were qualified in Essex County. Now, the application is detailed, but the applicants have to list a number of things. And I'm not going to go through all of these over here all night, but the county in which... Or the town in which they want to locate the facility. They have to demonstrate compliance with the local laws, codes, and ordinances and bylaws. They have to demonstrate they have an interest in the property and that there's a property owner willing to lease it or to sell the property to them. So this is all in this second phase of the application, which they're into now. As part of the application, the Department of Public Health can come out and do a site visit. There's a scoring process. They're looking at... The state's looking at, make sure there's a good geographic distribution. There's local support for the applications and other things like presence of home delivery systems, rather methods to ensure patient access. So the local support for the application is key. So it's my understanding that someone who's interested in a facility won't come into a town if there's not local support for it. If we do pass this moratorium, that indicates that we need time to study it and that right now, we're not receptive for someone coming in immediately. Obviously, we will be receptive, but we need to study it and create regulations. So it's my feeling that applicants are not going to look at communities if they're not totally receptive. And by that, I mean there are some towns that have created their zoning that allows them by special permits in certain districts in their town. So those would be receptive communities right now. If we don't do anything, if we don't put in detailed regulations, the state says that these facilities can't be located within five hundred feet of a school, daycare, or any other facility in which children commonly congregate. And it talks about how they measure it. It's from structure to structure. If we do our zoning, we can further restrict them. We can put restrictions on how close they can be to residential areas as well, or we could even make that distance between schools and the facility greater than the five hundred feet. As long as we don't make regulations that prohibit the use from coming into the town, we're okay. There's also the regulations stipulate a lengthy list of operating requirements, storage, security, cultivation. These are all under the state regulations that were passed. We can add to these regulations when we look at our bylaws, but we can't contradict these Also, the marketing of the product, the state dictates how you can market the product. They limit the extent on external signage. Thirty minutes before dusk, they can turn a sign on. So there's a lot of things that they have to comply with. Also, security. They're concerned about the surroundings, the shrubbery, the exterior of the buildings. They don't want it heavily landscaped so people could be hiding in the bushes or something and trying to rob someone that was coming out of a facility with their marijuana. We have to look at those issues to see how they interact with our zoning bylaws now, see how they contradict them, or how we might be able to enhance those requirements a little bit. Okay, so that was just a quick thumbnail of the state regulations. Now, what should Saugus do to plan for registered marijuana dispensaries? Well, in a nutshell, we need to study it. It's our field, we need to study it. We are proposing a temporary moratorium. We want to look... The reason why we want this moratorium is we want to look at the impact on this land use, on our local law enforcement, public safety needs, and how they interact with our current zoning right now. The duration of moratorium must have a rational relationship to the proposed planning process. So we need to use the time. We're proposing to have a moratorium up until September 30th of 2014. We want to use that time to undertake a study of the secondary effects of medical marijuana related uses. And we want to take that time to study, to develop and present a proposed bylaw, our ordinance to the legislative body, U, to address the issues identified in the study. Okay, our current zoning right now does not allow medical marijuana facilities. The federal... The state code, Mass... Code of Mass Regulation provide guidance to communities regulating medical marijuana, registered marijuana dispensaries. We need to study these regulations and see how they interact with our own regulations and any impacts reevaluated and addressed in a comprehensive manner. So these are all reasons why we're asking for this moratorium. So we need to take this planning process. We are proposing, while we're undertaking this planning process, to have this moratorium in effect of a finite duration on land use and structures so we can have the time to do this study. It would be effective till September 30th, 2014. So where is the AG, the Attorney General's Office, on all this? Okay, so this is fairly current stuff. Okay, so this is fairly current stuff. In March, the Attorney General approved the bylaw adopted by the town of Burlington establishing a temporary moratorium, ending -- their moratoriums ending in June of 2014. In approving the bylaw, the AG found the approximately 18-month moratorium was a reasonable exercise of the town's zoning powers because it allowed the time, sufficient time, to study the impacts of this on their own bylaws. So the Attorney General says, you know, that's a reasonable time. Again, in September of this year, the AG ruled that a two-year ban was not supported by a legitimate zoning objective. So there was one town that proposed a ban until June 30th of 2015. The AG says, you don't need that much time to study it. The AG then came out in that same September ruling that it was not unreasonable to do a moratorium until December 30th of 2014. So that was kind of like maximum period of time you can have and to put into a moratorium in effect until that period of time. So ours is a few months before that, December date. It's September 30th. So they also, the AG, disapproved Wakefield's total ban on these facilities. AG's office is basically saying state law was created, the voters approved it to allow medical marijuana facilities with restrictions. If you allowed one town to ban it, every town could end up banning it, and that was not the intent or the purpose of the will of the people who voted this in. So, and the AG just went on. This is just some logic in the AG's part, because the legislation states there's 35 facilities, one per county, and that this is all arguments why you really can't ban it. So they determined, the AG determined, that reasonable access to these facilities must be dispersed throughout the Commonwealth. Municipal ban on these would undermine the purpose. In other words, if one municipality could ban it, the rest could do. So they disapproved Wakefield, and that's why, you know, we're looking at moratoriums, not a ban on them. How do you regulate these facilities? You can do them a number of ways. Zoning bylaw. You can add the medical marijuana use to existing regulations and allow them in certain zoning districts, or you can create an overlay district to allow them in specific areas of towns that would transcend zoning districts. So you could place it in certain defined areas that could have a B1 zone and an industrial zone in it, for instance. And you can also regulate it by the Board of Health regulations and by general bylaws as well. So there's three ways of doing it. What's clearly a must is, we need to regulate it from a land use point of view, from the zoning bylaw point of view. And then I think we are going to look at Board of Health regulations as well. The key to any type of zoning change relative to medical marijuana is don't conflict the state law. So when exercising our right to govern, the town, and this is from the AG's office, exceeds its power only when it passes a bylaw inconsistent with the constitutional laws of the Commonwealth. So whatever we do, we can't negate the law that allows medical marijuana in the facility. We can couch it. We can put additional requirements, more bells to ring and, you know, hoops to jump through, but we can't make it so impossible that no one can locate a facility in the town. So those are basically these type of conflicts. The purpose of state law cannot be achieved in the face of the local bylaws that would be ruled unconstitutional, tend to be cruel, local action is not expressed but can be inferred by the comprehensive amendment which the legislature has regulated the subject. So, you know, those are basically all saying, you can't make it so difficult, it's not going to happen. So, here we are tonight. Amendment for zoning. The procedure is, Planning Board had its public hearing, made its recommendation to town meeting. Town meeting needs to vote in this. The Board of Health does regulations. Their regulations are easier to implement. They can be adopted at a regular meeting after summary of substance of any regulation is published, and that's under general laws. So basically, that's -- we only abbreviated it tonight because I didn't want to go through the two hours I had presented -- had ready to present tonight. But I guess I'm open for any questions, Mr. Moderator?
Questions to Mr. Luongo? Questions? Mr. Moses? Thank you. You're next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members. Question I have, I've been -- I've asked a few people in the last, well, since I got my copy of the warrant, and I haven't gotten a clear answer. This is a drug, right? And it's, I would assume it's available by prescription only. So why wouldn't these be dispensed through drugstores? Are you making a separate store just to sell marijuana? I mean, there's not a separate store for selling Motrin or cough syrup or something. Why would this be separate? I mean, do we have the authority to do that? Would that be a question for the town council? Mr. Vespoli? I mean--
Mr. Luongo?
The Selectmen deny rights, you know, for tattoo pads because they don't like the element in town stuff. I mean, this would be like, I think, similar type of circumstances. So why couldn't we govern it by saying to be dispensed through drugstores only? Is that possible?
Mr. Manager?
Just to try to address that question, because that question has come up at different meetings, but essentially, it's -- this is statutorily driven as far as what is allowed and what's approved in the structure of it. And technically, and Robert would probably -- they don't actually call them prescriptions. They're not considered prescriptions for people that are in need of these when they're written. But also, and this is sort of a discussion that I've had with the board, I think, and as well as others, is that different than like a liquor license that's regulated by the state where the town, whether it's the Board of Selectmen, a Board of Appeals, or Planning Board, somebody has additional sort of approval processes. This, by statute, is set up much differently and actually gives the local municipalities and local communities less control and approval, an actual approval process. And like Robert had pointed out here, the three things we can regulate is the land use, so that you could look at an overlay and you could restrict it, almost like adult entertainment, where you have certain zoning areas that it's restricted to be in, as well as looking at, you know, a general bylaw for law enforcement and the Board of Health having some regulation over what it is. But it's essentially driven by the statute that sets this up, and the local government has very little control at this point, is the way the statute's been dragged out. I don't know if you want to add to that, Robert?
Mr. Luongo, you want to add to that?
Yep. The town manager is absolutely right. And the regulations, the mass, code of mass regulations govern this. The state looked at a number of models from other states that allow it for medical use. And there's a, actually, it's a high bar to reach just to get qualified. Remember, I said there's 181 applicants, and they've qualified 155. And in the second stage, they're going to do query checks. All employees have to be, you know, checked out to make sure they don't have any past history that would bother them from being able to work in those facilities. And they don't want to give a monopoly of these dispensaries to a chain store. So the most that anyone can hold, I believe, are three of these facilities. And remember the definition in the beginning? So it's not only dispensing it, they can grow it as well. And so I don't think a Walgreens or something is going to be able to grow it. So these are all tightly regulated under the mass regulations, and we couldn't change that in our zoning bylaws or anything like that. Again, we have to be consistent with what the law says.
Mr. Moses, you have other questions?
Well, I guess if it's not through a drugstore and it's through a separate entity, I guess, their own store, what else would they be selling besides just the marijuana? I mean, they wouldn't survive just selling that. Would they be selling the paraphernalia, and all that type of stuff that goes with it? You know what I'm saying?
Please speak in the microphone.
Sure. Essentially, the, my understanding is that that's all they would be selling, and it looks like from other models across the country that it is very lucrative to be a dispenser. And just to add to, I guess, to get the perspective that people are more familiar with, is if you apply for a liquor license, you apply through the locality and it actually goes through an approval process here and then goes up to the state for an approval. How this is set up by regulation and statute is that the state is vetting, and they're only allowing a certain amount at this time, and they're vetting and going through an approval process for companies to be allowed to be a dispenser and to operate within Massachusetts. And then it's sent from the top down to the locality, which much less limited of any approval process, other than the things that we're talking about, trying to regulate it through this. Some of the process, because obviously, it is a federal issue with this, that, you know, there's obviously banking issues. These companies, not to get into all the details, but these companies have to have a certain amount of assets, you know, on hand, liquid assets, to even be able to be qualified through the state, because they're not, you can't get traditional lending or leverage for operations. So if that, I don't know if you want to add anything to that? If that helps.
Further questions or comments regarding Article 2? Mr. Horlick? Selectmen Horlick?
Good evening, town meeting and everybody at home. When this first came before the board, as soon as it passed, I had a conversation with the police chief the next day, and I listened to his concerns, and we went back and forth about the concerns about having these in town. That's why I motioned the board to get contact with the state delegation in order that if we have to have these in town, that we're allowed to do our own regulations, that it's just not going to be a blanket regulation set up by the state, that we have the opportunity to say where we want these and then how we want these put into town and the location. And if anybody has watched programs on TV in the past two years, there's this program called Marijuana USA that's out of California. It plays usually every couple of months because California's been in the forefront with this. And a lot of these stores do sell marijuana products. They'll sell snack bars, they'll sell oils, they'll sell shampoos, they'll sell brownies, they'll sell other things, because some people who need to take their marijuana can't smoke it, that they have to digest it through cereal or other products. So that's something else that if that gets involved, the Board of Health can look at too, because not everybody can take a certain drug a certain way. And that's why out in California and other places that this is legal, they have a whole different kinds of products that people can actually take in order to get what they need every day for their sickness. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Just to make an additional comment, I think one of the questions that sort of raises this issue is that, and other communities have looked at this, is the typical, I guess what they call headliner shops that sell drug paraphernalia. Other communities, I think Lynn might be one of them, that have actually put a city ordinance over there where they ban those type of facilities or retail stores. That's something that, you know, I think that that just talks about the complexity of this unknown that's sort of coming down the pike for all communities, and I think that speaks to us, you know, putting, supporting a moratorium so that we can figure out how this is going to roll out and how to, you know, best deal with the impact to the community. But those are things that we should, you know, probably consider over the next year.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none? Are you ready for-- Selectmen Pennella?
You were hiding behind the-- Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen, I stand before you today to ask if you would vote for the moratorium. There's a lot of complex land issues. We have security concerns, safety concerns of where these facilities are going to be located, near our neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools. But the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention this evening is that we have already received an inquiry that was dated October 4th, and were officially notified that somebody is intending to locate a registered marijuana dispensary in our town. So I just wanted you to know that we do have inquiries already for our town, and I thought that was important for your vote this evening to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none? You ready for the vote? Those in favor of Article 2, please signify by raising your right hands, and the tellers will take the count. This is a two-thirds vote. Fourteen. Fifteen? Sixteen. Thirty? And those opposed, please raise your right hands and tell us will take the count. Thirty, having voted four and zero in opposition, Article 2 passes with the necessary two-thirds vote. Mr. Bozell? Mr. Bozell moves to adjourn and sign his eye. Second? Those favorite German, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? And good luck to all. They did!